Good evening, everyone. We will officially begin our public hearing on House Bill 581. Of course, the purpose of this meeting is, one, to let you hear some information about the House bill. So we'll have our experts present some information. We also want to make sure that you have an ability to give us some of your feedback as it relates to House Bill 581. Just to make sure that we clarify, the City of Augusta, the governing body, has not yet determined whether or not they will opt in or opt out of House Bill 581. But we are going through our due diligence and having these public hearings to make sure, again, that we hear from the citizens what they're looking for and what their expectations are. And hopefully, by the same rule, it makes sure that you have all the respective information. Because we know that item, that referendum item, was a very complicated item. So hopefully, we can bring some clarity to some concerns or questions that you have. I would like to acknowledge our, some of our governing body here today. Of course, we have our mayor. We have our Commissioner Guilford, District 8. We have our Commissioner Don Clark, District 5. And we have our Commissioner Tina Slindick, District 3, here today. Seven. Sorry, sorry. I'm looking at our previous commissioner. Commissioner, what is it?
President.
I know that, but I'm trying to figure, what did we call those before? The previous commissioner, maybe? It's some kind of title, I know. But Sean Frannum, District 7, is here with us as well. But right now, I'm not going to hold you guys up because I want you to have all the time that you need to make sure that you understand what we're doing. So I'm going to turn it over now to Tim Schreer, who's our interim finance director, and our tax appraiser, Scott Roundtree.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Scott Roundtree, the chief appraiser for the Tax Assessor's Office. And tonight, we're going to provide an overview of the changes that were created by House Bill 581, but specifically, the floating homestead exemption that we've been hearing about, and a new floating local option sales tax that is tied into the bill as well. In addition to that, we'll kind of go over some of the factors our commission will be considering as they attempt to make their decision, do we remain in this homestead or do we opt out of it? All right. So first, just a quick overview of House Bill 581. So during last year's legislative session, there was a lot of discussion and concern about the rising property values across the state, and subsequently, the impacts of the higher assessments that were being provided by the Tax Assessor's Office, and the impact that had on homeowners. The result was House Bill 581. That was an attempt to pursue a measure that would control the increases in the assessments and hopefully, the tax bills as well. So again, it was passed last year. It was voted on in November of last year. It passed in Augusta, I think 62% up there. Yep. And it changed many things in addition to the homestead that it added in this floating local option sales tax. It also provided some procedural changes for our office and for the Tax Commissioners' office. But the big item is the floating homestead exemption. Before we get into the floating exemption, just a quick overview of what is a homestead exemption? Really, it's just something that reduces the taxable value of your primary residence. You qualify if you own the property, you occupy the property, and you declare it as your primary residence. April 1st is a date that everyone should know. It's the deadline for all returns and homestead applications and any other information that's provided to our office for the annual valuation process. So if you don't know if you have a homestead, please check in with the tax commissioner. Please check in with our office. Make sure you have a homestead if you own the property and you live there, and make sure you have the one that's most beneficial to you. There are several types of exemptions. The regular homestead, we call it standard, is just a $5,000 reduction of the taxable value of your home. A lot of property owners in Richmond County are disabled veterans. That's a much larger exemption. It changes every year with inflation, similar to the one that's being proposed, and it's adjusted annually. And there's other exemptions for those with lower incomes, disabilities. So again, check with the tax commissioner and make sure you've got the one that most benefits you as a property owner. So floating homestead, what is it? How does it work? Essentially, the floating homestead works by increasing the value of your homestead exemption to offset inflation based on the prior year's consumer price index. That prior year is what we call the base year that we start with, with the homestead exemption. And it's the starting point for 2025. If it's in place, the base year would be 2024. And each year, that property's taxable value can't increase any more than the CPI for all urban consumers that is published every January. And so we already know that the CPI for 2024 was 2.9%. So if during this year's valuation process and you have a homestead and this is in place and your property is increased by more than 2.9%, it would be capped at that 2.9% and the rest would be exempted. So I want to make sure everyone knows, because I've heard a question a lot, what does this do to my current homestead? Nothing. It keeps it the same. It is in addition to and not in lieu of your existing homesteads. So there's no risk of your current homesteads going away. We would figure out this floating homestead and then add on your existing homestead after that. One thing to know is that these values do reset when the property is sold. So if you have a homestead with a floating cap for 10 years and you sell it, the new property owner gets a new base year based on whatever that current market value is. So these will be reset when the property is sold, or if any substantial change happens to your property, if you do a major renovation, or in addition, that value could be added on to the base value. Surviving spouses can get this homestead, so you don't have to reapply with a new base year. If you're a surviving spouse, your spouse will get the same benefits that you've been getting on the property to that point in time. Now, I want to emphasize another thing, that this is not a tax cap. This is an assessment cap. So this caps your individual assessments, but doesn't affect necessarily the overall tax process that the county is concerned about. All right. This is just a quick example to show you what I kind of explained a second ago, that if you have a property value of $100,000 in the base year and your home appreciates by 10%, but we have a CPI of 4 that caps the taxable value to $104,000, but you appreciate it to 110, that difference between 104 and the 110, that's exempted with this type of homestead. We would calculate that and then add on whatever existing exemption you already have in place to determine what the new taxable value is. Give you an idea, I guess, of what kind of savings that actually is. In this example, without the floating homestead compared to having the floating homestead, you'd save about $15 or $16. So that's going to vary every year depending on how much your property appreciates, what the caps are going to be. But in this example, it'd be about a $15 savings for what you would pay the county. So the next, I guess, impacts or concerns or questions would be how this impacts our annual digest, which is something that's very important for the governing body in the county to look at what tax collections need to be. Our digest is just the total of all property value every year. Commercial property, residential property, personal property, cars, boats, anything that's taxable. And we calculate all of that and then add in the exemptions to see how much the total value is and how much does the tax rate need to be for the county to fund their operations. In the example we're looking at right here, we made an assumption, what if this started this year, or excuse me, in 2024? And so if it had started in 2024, there would be a $71 million increase in exemptions. About 9,000 property owners would have benefited out of the 31,000 homestead properties that are in the county. The rollback rate, in other words, the millage rate that the county picked to use to operate their budget would have increased. We would have a higher millage rate, but the revenues would have remained neutral. And so this is telling me that with this thing in place, if the county's looking at what are our impacts, there's not much of an impact on revenues. Individual homeowners with the homestead could benefit with reduced taxes, but that higher tax rate shifts the tax loss to all other property owners. It's just a tax shift as far as revenues are concerned. So just looking at one year, it doesn't really help us. This is a long-term proposed homestead. It's known to have more of an impact over time. So we went back to 2021. What would happen if we had started this in 2021? And so the assumptions that we thought would happen, they did occur, right? So our exemptions continued to grow, our net digest continued to go down, our millage rates continued to climb, and the share of who pays what, in other words, the county ad valorem tax currently collects around $52 million a year. Who pays what portion of that would change. So this last tax year, residential property owners and agricultural property owners paid about 53% of all the property tax. If this had started in 2021 and we'd gotten to this point in time where you're making, where you're getting the savings of the homestead, that would have shifted to about 50%. So residential property owners would be paying less. All of the property owners would be paying more because of that tax shift. So again, taxes, they're not going away. They're shifting from these homesteaded properties to all other types of properties. And in this example, we have two properties, the exact same value. They're appreciating and increasing in value at the exact same rate. And over a three- or four-year period, the gap between what those properties pays starts to get larger. So you see a lower increase in what homeowners are paying and a higher increase in what all other property owners are paying. So this disproportionate tax obligation is a known result of the floating homestead, and that disparity could grow over time as this homestead is in place. And that disparity can be showing up in other ways as well. And Tim's going to share an example of the way that the taxes would shift even among homesteaded properties, where two property owners have equal values, but one of them has a base year of 2024, and the other property owner's is 10 years later.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. As Scott said, this is a, just to show the value, the change in the tax shift from two homesteaded properties. You can see that the tax burden for the first home that was purchased in 2025 is only $870, while the home that was purchased that has the same value, same sales value, in 2035 is paying almost $1,300. So there is no new money for the county. It's just shifting to somebody else. One of the decisions that the board will have to make, and you as taxpayers will also have to make, is do we, if it's, if we go forward with this, if we remain in, do we implement another sales tax? Excuse me, I'm losing my voice today. The decision would have to be made, do we implement another sales tax or FLOST? That's yes or no. And it can only be implemented if we remain in. Quick facts about the FLOST. It can go from 0.05% to 1%. Because we have the Coliseum C SPOST, we can only go up a half a percent. It must be approved by the voters, by you. You get to decide if we're going to implement this FLOST. And that happens every five years along the same lines as the current SPOST package. Oops, missed. Sorry, little behind. One of the things I'm going to repeat over and over again is it is relatively revenue neutral for Augusta. We're going to collect the same amount of money either way, but how it gets paid is a big shift. Currently, it's sales tax and ad valorem taxes make up about a 50/50 split, which in my world of finances, that's a nice equal balance. We're not relying too heavily on one or the other. If we remain, if it, keep the HB 581, if that still stays in place and you all approve the FLOST, our sales tax ratios go from a 50/50 to almost a 70/30. Well, it's great for the homeowners. Everybody's going to see a little bit of a tax increase when it comes to the sales tax. Also puts all of our eggs in one basket, which may or may not be a good thing depending on what happens to the year. Some things to consider for the impacts. This would, existing homesteads, we get the FLOST, it'll be implemented this year. The increased exemptions, as Scott said, will put upward pressure on the millage rate. We're still going to collect the same amounts of ad valorem taxes, but we've got to raise our millage rate a little bit to collect the same dollars to offset the exemptions. Tax exemptions would shift from the homesteaded properties to commercial properties. One good thing, if you want to look at it that way, it does give us an opportunity for the FLOST. But the other bad thing on both sides is this decision is final. Currently, the two dates, the decision date is March 1st. And once we make that decision, or the commission makes that decision, that's the final decision. Again, if you want to opt out, no FLOST, everything stays the same. Taxes stay the same, the same percentages. And again, we do, this is the final decision. Currently, with the legislation, the way it's written, if we opt in or out by March 1st, that's the decision we have to live with. Here's just basically a recap for considerations and impacts. I guess we'll open it up for comments now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If there are any respective comments, we ask that you come to the mic that is in the center of the aisle, please. Anyone have any comments or concerns?
I guess I'm the only one. Hi, my name's Paul Wheeler, and I've been living here in Richmond County since 2016. I'm also a member of the Board of Equalization, and so hear a lot about assessments and taxes, even though we don't really deal with taxes. And I guess my question is, I believe the state of Georgia allows counties to make their own exemptions. And so have you considered if we did opt in and things got shifted, you know, way too far to businesses or something, that then we could create our own exemption to sort of undo it a little bit?
So if we opt in, or we're in already, I'll put it that way, right? As of January 1, every county and municipality has this. So if we're in, I guess technically, yes, you could create your own. If you opt out, you could also create your own. The legislative members from Augusta have the ability to create another type of homestead. And it would be interesting if we had two, right? So if you have two similar homesteads, then we would have to track the exemption tied to both of them. And in any given year, we'd have to give the exemption that's most beneficial to that property owner. So we'd be tracking and maintaining two separate homesteads and seeing which one worked best.
Now, I know this group has more questions than that. I've been following social media and I've been hearing a lot of chatter. Come on with the questions. Come on up, ma'am.
Do you have handouts?
We can't hear. You got to come to the, oh, handouts. We will make sure that this presentation is available on all city's social media sites. Madam Administrator, can we make sure this presentation? On augustaga.gov and all respective social media sites. We will also tag every sitting commissioner, so it will be available all over social media as well as the city's website.
Tammy Harris, and my concern is the slideshow itself, to me, is here and I'm still here. So...
Come on. So we've been hearing that, but from the beginning, this is a complex, complicated issue that I tell everybody, all of Georgia's 159 counties are addressing. As you know, we voted on the amendment on November 5th, and we weren't educated very much on it. I think everybody voted on it based on the opportunity to decrease their taxes. They didn't realize all the complexities about it. So that's why the legislation gives us an opportunity to have three public hearings if we're considering opting out, and that's why we're here, to have those discussions. Now, as mayor, I like the opportunity and the idea of lowering taxes for those, you know, that have homestead exemptions. However, there's a different, there's a different side. And last time, I spoke on behalf of the Augusta Metro Chamber, but this afternoon, if Sue Parr is willing, I would like you to hear her take on it, on how potentially it could disadvantage some of our other taxpayers, particularly small commercial, small business, commercial property owners. And to make sure I get it right this time, Sue, do you mind? Okay, all right. Sue Parr is newly retired president of the Augusta Metro Chamber, and Sue, thank you for offering your help.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Parr. I'm the retired president of the Augusta Metro Chamber of Commerce, and now I have a small niche policy firm. And so I still advocate for the chamber, and I've been doing that for a lifetime, it seems like. For the Augusta Metro Chamber, I was there 20 years, and prior to that, well, in total, I've been in the chamber profession for about 35 years total. So my retirement is well-deserved, but I'm very, very, still much engaged with the community. And this issue is important for everyone because, like you, I'm a homeowner. And the opportunity, especially being retired, the opportunity to not see huge inflationary assessments and our tax rates go up, it was, it is very appealing. But you know, there's always the devil in the details. And so when I was at the chamber, we took, and we have, we're still looking at this. And I will tell you for two reasons. The chamber's really asking the commission and the mayor to opt out for lots of reasons. And I could be up here for 20 minutes. But first and foremost, as you noted on the slide, only 38% of the properties in Richmond County are homesteaded, which leaves 62% commercial. So what does "commercial" mean? Well, it means a lot of things. It means that when you have a small business that is maybe renting or owning their own commercial property, their taxes are going to potentially go up because, as Tim said, the money's just going to get rearranged. It's not, the city still needs what it needs in order to operate, and we all want that. So the commercial businesses are going to take the hit, more so if the school board, actually, and maybe you know that the school board is currently considering this as well because they have to opt out separately. But, you know, businesses are having a difficult time right now. As you know, cost pressures just keep going up and up and up. And from a federal and state and even local level, we're not sure where that's going to go. But more so for the businesses, think about 25 multifamily, 25,000 multifamily units here in the county. Only 51, about 51% of our citizens, about 100,000 people, don't own their own home. So how are we to say to those folks, the other 100,000, "Sorry, you don't get a tax break"? Because if they rent their house or rent their apartment, they're going to see that commercial, they're sitting in a commercial property, they're going to see rent increases. And then there's the other potential opportunity for another half penny sales tax. You know, sales tax can be fairly regressive. Sometimes the people that can't afford to pay the sales tax are the ones that pay the most. And so we have to be very careful with sales taxes. We're already up to 8.5% in Augusta, Richmond County, and all of that money is being well-spent. We've been strong advocates for the East SPOST, for the Sea SPOST, the T SPOST, all of those things. And the pennies work really, really well, but to have a penny that offsets property taxes is a bit new and different. We have the lost already, which helps to calibrate our property taxes. And then putting another half penny on that, as Tim said, you start to get an imbalance in terms of a county's revenues and where they're coming from because they need to be diversified. So I hope that answers a few questions, and I'm happy to take any others.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Yes, sir. Turn that mic around. There you go. Turn it back. There you go. Yes, sir. All right.
So, two questions. Does this impact, I'm a military, retired military, so how does this impact homestead exemptions for military at all, period?
It doesn't. Correct?
It's added on to all existing homesteads.
Okay.
Whatever benefit you have now would be additional.
Additional, so basically additional tax, deduction or tax, reduction in taxes. That's what it sounds like, right?
It reduces the value of your home that can be applied to the minimum rate.
I'm just sending it in the mic so people online can hear.
Okay. And then, so, it's, yeah, it sounds, yeah, it sounds to me that, because a lot of property owners don't have homestead exemptions, am I correct?
That is correct.
So it doesn't impact them at all?
Does not impact them at all.
Right. So, and the homestead exemption, from my understanding, has something to do with age and maybe disability or military, am I correct?
It has to do with you classifying as your primary residence, am I correct?
So, that's right. The homestead is available to all homeowners.
To all homeowners.
It could be 12 or 1,000, right? As long as you own the home and you declare it as your primary residence. And most people in the county get a small reduction on their valuations and in their bills because of that. But there are greater exemptions for disabled, lower income, disabled military, and there's a long list. But those are the main categories of most homesteads in the county.
You can only classify one home.
Right.
That's right.
You can only, you can only...
Just one.
Choose one exemption, right? And for one home.
One exemption for one family unit of one house.
Okay, cool.
So if you own four homes in the county or in the state, you can only have one homestead exemption.
And then, so the last question is, where is the commission nerds and your team weighing so far, swaying?
I don't speak for the group, but the law states that we have to have public hearings if we... if we're considering opting out. As a governing body, we have not made a decision. That's why we're here to, to get public input from you, just, just to hear. And I haven't heard anybody yet say to opt in, besides, besides Mayor Bob Young, and he ain't here tonight. He said to opt in, and he's given a valid reason, which he feels valid for opting in, but we wanna hear from you, and that's why we're here. Alright, so that's one opt out.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
My vote was to opt out. I was at the first meeting at Diamond Lake. But one of my concerns is, you mentioned if you, well, we have, you have the choice to opt in or opt out. If you chose to opt out, which is maybe where you're leaning to, but even though you say you haven't, if you chose to opt out, how do we know that there still won't be a floss or a sales tax increase anyway?
Georgia, Georgia is very specific about sales tax. You can only go up to a certain amount. And right now, the only sales tax that we don't use is a floss. You have to, it'd have to be a state statute or state law change for us to get another sales tax. And even if it did happen, that'd only be a half a percent, but I don't see us asking for another, for another sales tax. Right, if we opt out, we cannot go and ask you to vote for a floss. The only way we can get that is if we stay in. But if we opt out, there's no floss.
So they're just the possibly one penny sales tax, or whatever you call it, even at some point?
No, ma'am. If we opt out, there will be no new sales tax.
Okay. And one of the things I've heard tonight is that the decision is final, whatever is, the vote comes out to be. Is it final for 20 years or final for how many years? What do you mean when you say it's final?
Right now, we have, the voters have opted in. So the decision by May 1st, the commission has to make by May 1st, is if we want to opt out. And what is that? March 1st, I'm sorry, March 1st.
So it, it was a constitutional amendment for a new homestead, period. There's no timeframe, there's no sunset, there's no end to it. So if it's implemented, it's there. Until it, it was, it would have to be changed by the legislatures in, in Atlanta to provide for a change or a removal of it. So the current setup, based on the law, is if we opt in, we're in, and there's no end to it. If we opt out, we can't use the same structure, but we could create our own that's similar to it.
Um, the, Ms. Sue, the person who just spoke about being the Chamber of Commerce, she using her example about rental properties, possibly if you, if you opted, I think her scenario was if you opted...
Out.
Out, that possibly rental properties would increase? She said if you opt in, rental properties would increase. But all, but rental properties, that's not really a good example, because rental properties, they have been increasing regardless of, with this situation.
Sue, 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 you wanna, you wanna respond to that? So, we, we need you to come to the mic, I'm sorry, Sue.
There will be a cost shift to the commercial properties. So, commercial properties include multifamily?
So, exactly what would happen to the rental properties? It'd be a little prone to error to predict what would happen. But it's a guarantee that whatever amount of money is exempted would be shifted in a, in commercial properties, rental properties, whatever it is, that tax savings for the homeowners would shift to all other property owners. So they would have higher tax burdens.
My name's Annette Trollette. I've lived in Richmond County since 2009. I want us to opt out. I own rental properties, and I have not gone up in my rent in years. I've had tenants that have lived there a really long time, and this is just gonna force me to raise the rent. And you know, I've got some great tenants, and I just don't see a positive in this.
Thank you, ma'am, for that comment.
One more, one more. Can you go to the last slide one more time? And then, for the sake of just talking, it sounds like, from my understanding, that if we opt in, basically, those tax, those who are homestead exempted will get a, uh, increase in their taxes as far as reduction in their mortgage, let's just say that, layman's terms, right? Your mortgage will go down because your taxes will go down because you're homestead exempted. But those who are not homestead exempted will suffer because, or the commercial properties that you're talking about will suffer because they will get a higher tax. Now, that higher tax will incur a higher rental rate and things of that nature, am I correct?
I think those are potential effects. I guess I, I've resisted from using the word "suffer" because I don't know what that disparity would be exactly. Um, you know, the, the commercial properties would, like I said, they definitely would be paying a higher tax rate than they would if this didn't exist.
Okay.
I think I missed one point in your question. I'll make sure I get it out.
That's cool, let's go to this one, the protection one, right? Future protection from market increases.
Okay.
Right?
And so again, this is a, an exemption that is completely tied to the CPI. And your taxable value can only go up by whatever that CPI was the prior year. So that percentage is gonna change every year. Last year's was 2.9%, the year before was 4%, the year before was 8%. So we'll be looking at the values, how much they change, what's the CPI, and how much of that value change is gonna be exempted. And so when I say protection from future increases, if your property value, and a homestead property, is outpacing inflation, you'll continue to exempt that portion of your value. If your property value stays the same or is less than inflation, you won't get any additional benefit. You'll continue to get assessed at the full value of your property. So because it's tied to that index, you have to do better than the index to benefit with this type of homestead.
So, because how does that tie to appraisals? Like, right now, across the city, we see a lot of homes' values are being appraised higher. For mine, particularly Elderberry, with every, all the new development around there, homes have appraised higher. How does that impact appraisals?
So, the appraisal process will remain the same. We'll continue to value properties based on what's been going on in the past. Looking at past sales to determine what's the value as of January 1. And so that procedure, that process shouldn't be affected. We'll continue to do that as we do now.
Okay.
One last question, a comment. Can you speak again at what you spoke to on your first meeting about, if you already receive a homestead exemption, that current exemption won't change, but this may either give you an increase or not?
Right, so this homestead would be calculated first. We'd figure out how much value beyond the, the limit is on your home, exempt that. And then whatever your current exemption is, also reduce the taxable value by that amount. So this is additive, it's added on to what you already have.
Okay, my name is Alicia James. I live here in Richmond County. Is there anyone in here who thinks we should opt in? Let's start there. No, 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 because they, they have to make a certain opt in or out. Okay, well, I'm just gonna say the information that I have. In the last year to two years, Richmond County, we have had a sluggish market when it comes to residential and commercial real estate. So should we opt in to this? That, that means that those homeowners that are already tax exempt on your, or not tax exempt, if you already have homestead exemption on your home at this time, opting in, it's not gonna change. However, you don't know what your status may be once we opt in because we can't opt out. So should you need to put your property in a loved one's name? Or should you desire to sell your home? Those individuals are going to pay at that higher rate at the time of transfer of the property. So because opting in, we would also need this floss, this, this half cent, saying that we would need to pay that half cent more in taxes, and we would have to vote on it every five years in order to keep that half cent more tax credit. But we're paying into that. So what you're saying to opt in, you're saying, "I'm okay with this, paying this half cent more, and we have to vote on this half cent more every five years, and should, in those every five years, it's not voted yes for that half cent, then we're not gonna have that benefit of what the half cent is supposed to do." So everybody gonna get that part if we opt in and say yes to it. So which means Richmond County is already being outpaced by our neighboring counties when it comes to new construction homes and much of the resale of the homes. So opting in is going to affect us when we try to sell our properties. Because we, Richmond County already has higher property taxed than the neighboring counties. That, that's fine if you don't believe it, but if you talk to a mortgage lender, that's what they're going to, they'll give you the information, okay? So which means opting in, we're subject to send Richmond County somewhat into a depression down the road. So there are things that Richmond County, we're, we're saying opt in, pay the half cent tax, but we have no extra amenities in Richmond County that Richmond County has been asking for. So to me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to opt in.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, I got this young lady here, and sir, you're up after her, okay?
Well, I, I've been in Richmond County, been a homeowner since 2004. And I wanted, I want to opt out. My, my vote is to opt out. I read the ballot, and the ballot could have been very misleading when it was voting time. And when you had, when you're talking about a lot of older people or even some people who own homes who just did, did not understand the question. So I feel like we should opt out if we have to revisit this in five years or 10 years, whenever it is, then that's another, that should give us another opportunity. Like she said, Richmond County do have higher property taxes than other surrounding county, other neighboring counties. And so with everything else is on the rise that Richmond County do go through, we just, what it was, I think it was three or four percent on our water bill. Four percent on our water bill. Georgia Power just raised our power bill.
No, that's not the city.
No, no, I know that's not the city's decision. But with everything on the rise and the pay scale is not on the rise for Richmond County, I think it should be opted out for now. If the, the fee have to be shifted to commercial or other property owners who rent out their property, they're making money hand over fist. They have the, they have the ability to raise their rent. The young lady said she wanted to opt out, she has, she, I don't know if she understood, but she has property that she rents out, and she has longtime tenants. And she has to raise the rent on them, that's her option. And she choose not to, that's not, everybody else shouldn't suffer because she doesn't wanna raise her rent. So I say we should opt out as a community. I, you know, I hope the commissioners consider that we should opt out in this until this revises. And maybe when y'all put it back on the ballot, on the ballot again, it's worded so people could understand.
Thank you.
Oh, whoever put it on the ballot.
Thank you for that. You know, while this gentleman comes to the mic, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna talk about Richmond County for just a second. Everybody says our tax rate is, is higher than our neighbors'. I would, I would dispute that. Commissioner Fram, how many years have we rolled back in the last 10 years? Nine out of 10 years? We're at the 2004 military. That's your Augusta, Richmond County government. Come on, sir. 2004.
Hello. My name is Kenneth Pugh. I've lived in Augusta, Richmond County all my life. And I've seen the burden of taxes being on the backs of homeowners. Now, you know, everybody has to fight for what they want. I'm not a business person, I don't own a business. And if I did, I probably wouldn't like the burden being shifted business. But I'm fighting for what I want, and I'm a homeowner, and I don't wanna see my taxes go up any higher than what they are. Now, my understanding is, the voters voted on this, and they said, "We're in." And it's up to the ruling body of Augusta to opt out, correct?
Yeah, but you know what, that's a great segue. We're gonna put that ballot question up on the screen so we can read it thoroughly. Because as former Mayor Bob Young said, it's like words salad.
It is.
So if you read it at the last, and I'm not gonna read all of it, at the end, it says, "But which any county, consolidated government, municipality, or local school system may opt out upon completion of certain procedures." And I'm assuming those certain procedures meaning having these three public hearings. It gave us the opportunity from the beginning to opt out, but a lot of people, I don't think, kinda read that far into the constitutional amendment. But it, it gave, it gives us the opportunity to opt out.
Right now, we're in, correct?
We're in right now.
And it's up to the ruling body to opt us out.
To opt out, you're exactly right.
Everybody that comes up here and thinking that, you know, we can vote on this, we voted on this already. The voters have said, the majority of the voters have said, "We're in." Now it's up to the ruling body to opt us out.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for that.
At Diamond Lakes, I was there. And you voiced your opinion about where you were.
I never voiced my opinion. I said, "I like the idea of protecting taxpayer, but I'm not gonna vote to disadvantage commercial property owners because we have to keep a, a robust, small business community in this county." We, we can't, we can't disadvantage them to where they go to another neighboring county and get advantageous tax rates to move their business. I don't want that.
I've seen how things go. You know, Columbia County versus Richmond County, North Augusta versus Augusta. Yeah, it's not the same, it's not a, a bag of apples, it's apples and oranges. I've seen people where I work, when their income rises, they move out of Richmond County and go to Columbia County or go to North Augusta. Augusta has the burden that these other places don't have.
You, you're right.
Yeah.
In, in that, in that, the young lady mentioned it perfectly. And I saw this statistic just last week. Aiken County had more than 1,200 new single-family resident permits for housing in Aiken County. Columbia County had over 800. How many you think Richmond County had? Less than 250.
You said that at Diamond Lakes. And some of the people at Diamond Lakes voiced their opinion about all these apartments that are popping up instead of home being built. So, you know, I, I guess business people do what they want. All you can do is offer them incentives to build homes. But it's, it's easy to throw up an apartment building, and there you go. That's not helping our tax burden. Homeowners, people paying property tax on their homes is what's helping.
In new home construction. We have to increase that number from 233, where our neighbors are outpacing. In new home construction. We have to increase that number from 233 where our neighbors are outpacing us. We have to build more homes. And communities that are deciding to opt in, there aren't many, but they're deciding to opt in based on their residential home growth and their tax-based growth based on residential properties. Unfortunately, Richmond County, we're just not there.
Okay. Mr. Guilford, Mr. Clark, Mr. Sliestack, where are you guys at?
Come on up.
On being in or, or opting out. I'm putting you on the spot.
No, I'd be happy to tell you where I'm at.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, good. Um, actually, um, before I even voted back November, I pulled a sample ballot. And I discussed it with my wife. I said, there's too many unanswered questions on this thing. And the way I vote on the commission floor, if, if I'm in doubt, I'm gonna vote no. I was in doubt, but you see the young lady behind you. Everybody in this room, do y'all get a full understanding of the repercussions and what it actually affects? If we pass this, if we don't pass this, this is, nobody could get a grip on it. These other communities can't get a grip on it. And that's scary. Cause once we opt in, we can't opt out. We got the lowest, somebody said we had high mileage rate. No, we don't. It's 6.48. We actually a little bit over 4% below the, our cap. Like Sean Frandom said, our mileage is the same as it was in 2004. If we opt in, you only save $14 on your house. But look at the impact it'll do to the rest of the community. Is that fair? That's less than, no, let me just, let me just finish. 14, $15. But here's, here's the other catch, where our finance director said it's revenue neutral. And that revenue neutral, I wish you would pull up, um, Proposition 13, House Bill 5, and it has House Bill 581. Government's gonna get their money. There's 4.6% mills that this government could go up to if it so chooses. So that $15 would go up to $150. But we've been good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. Anybody over 65 don't have to pay school tax, which is good. I'm a couple of years away from it. Okay, so what you asking for might hurt us later. It's called a ripple effect, the way I look at it. Whatever action we take now, we might not see it. One week, one year, five years down the road, we're gonna go, doggone, I wish I wouldn't have done that. But at least with my stance, the way it is now, we can always opt in. But once we opt in, we can't get out. It's not like marriage. I've been going 39 years on that. But, um, anyway, where my stance is, I'm here to listen. I'm glad everybody who came up to that microphone, I'm glad that our finance director, our tax assessor, as well as our administrators, actually taking time away with their families to try to help everybody understand. But that last meeting in Diamond Lakes, I was lost worse. The information that was given is like this. Like you said, it's 10 foot. We down here at the four foot. And it's kinda scary, but we fixing to open a door that we don't know what's behind it. So again, that's where my stance is. If you wanted to hear it, I give it.
I know. He wanted to know, hey, everyone. That's why that was a loaded question. So first of all, um, I'm with everyone up here. Um, we're doing this so that we can get informed. Um, not just for us, but for everyone. Um, I voted no for this. I'll tell you that directly. I voted no. It didn't make sense to me. But I'm gonna tell you, a lot of people that voted yes or no really didn't have the clarity of understanding of what the heck they were voting for. And that's the whole reason why we're doing this now. So I'm gonna encourage everyone, um, not sidestepping what you asked. Um, but I'm gonna encourage everyone to just get informed. Um, and this is a way to get informed. Ask your questions, gain your clarity. I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna bring the administrator up here soon and she's gonna break it down in more layman's terms than what Tim and Scott did. Tim and Scott are our subject matter experts. Um, and they're giving it to you as it stands. Um, but we gotta really kinda break this rock down so everybody really has a more identifiable understanding. Um, but that's the point of this. But listen, we wanna make sure that we're making the right decision collectively that doesn't ripple affect, um, all of us involved.
Hey, um, I think the time for doing this should have been before we ever voted on it. This is pretty late in the game to me. Um, I actually voted for this. But I'll tell you what I did. I read the word limits. And that's about it. Because I think most people, they did. They, this was a terribly explained thing to me. And I pride myself on kinda following a lot of this stuff, but all I was thinking was, oh yeah, let's cap, cap, cap. But as we've learned with some of this, um, and like they've said, the money's just, it's just gonna shift. It is. I own a house. I don't wanna see mine go up. But you say, you know, some people say, well, you know, the commercial people, let them deal with it. But I'm telling you, everybody that lives here, that, what the commercial people do is gonna affect you too. If they're making a product, they're not gonna eat that. They're gonna pass it on to the consumer. So I think we need to do what we can to keep our commercial operations strong in this county. I mean, I'll be honest with you. I'm, I'm leaning toward voting to, to opt out. That would be me for, for now. But I'm gonna work with my commissioners and we're gonna see where we go. But, um, that's just me. I mean, I, I, I did, I voted for it and probably would never, ever vote for anything again I didn't a hundred percent know about. But, um, I, I think staying in is, is not gonna be a good long-term thing for us, so.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna take another question and we're gonna bring our superstar, uh, madam administrator up to give her a take.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Pittman and I am a homeowner and, um, one of the 38% that get to enjoy a home exempt status, um, homeowner exemption. When I had looked at this on the ballot and I looked at it as much information as I could get a hold of as to what was involved, um, it, it looked like it was something that I would be for. I appreciate all of you taking the time to come and explain what the ramifications of this will be to us and how it will impact our community at large. Um, I love this community. And I would like to see it grow. I would like to see more businesses come in. I would like to see more people get jobs. But you're not going to get businesses in if they're having to pay higher tax rates. And so as much as I don't want my taxes to be increased, I understand that I have to do my part. And based on that and the information that you're giving us tonight, I'm for opting out.
Thank you ma'am. Alright, sir, give me, let, let our administrator, we'll get to your question. Let our administrator come up. She has a few things. Come on.
Okay, so hopefully I'm gonna get this right since I, I had Commissioner Slindick in District 3 originally. Um, but you know, to, uh, the lady's point over here about it being here, that's how I felt when I first read this, you know? And I looked, I said, my God, you know, I've, I've, I've jumped from one side to the next, to be honest, as it relates to understanding what is being, has been said. I think Ms. Parr and, and Ms. Slindick probably did a great job in, in putting it as, in layman's term. Um, but what you need to look at is, yes, we, the voters, 62% of the voters, did vote for that. And I, I, I imagine a number of them seem limited. And anytime you see that and your taxes not gonna increase, the first thing you saying is yes. And you stop reading. You know you did that. So everybody did that, 62%. What we want you to understand is, is not that we're not respecting or the governing body is not respecting what the voters did. They are. But that question actually gives them an opportunity now to get some feedback from you to see, really was that the right thing to do? Because so many people were confused on that. Um, there are so many different agencies, municipalities, that are going through the same thing. Everybody's going through these hearings. There are some that are opting in, but guess what? Just as the mayor stated, they have so much residential growth. We don't have that in Richmond County, unfortunately. So what you're gonna have is, you may save $15. Let's say that your house and, and if we do this and we opt in, the gentleman in, in the jacket is gonna save $15, right? Well, on this side, because the burden is now going to the commercial, right? And so, you know, you go to this business over here. And this business, you normally would go in there and get something out of that shop, you know, for $20. But guess what? That business is incurring an additional tax. So what they're saying is, heck, I gotta shift the burden of this cost to somebody. It's gonna be you in that jacket that's going to that business that you've been going in there buying it for $20. Guess what it's gonna cost now? Potentially $35, which mean that $15 that you may have saved, potentially, may have saved, you're gonna end up paying it in the long run. So I hope I'm giving it in layman's term. Of, of what it does. And then you have to depend on a floss, the, you know, the floating local option sales tax. So many losses and floating around, but you have to look at that and say, every five years, we got to get the, we have to ask the people to vote on it, the constituents. How many people wanna vote for an additional tax unless they really seeing something from it, like our splot? Well, we have splot coming up, splot nine. So how many people are gonna vote on the floating local option sales tax as well as our splot nine? Not many. And so, you know, it's, it's, it fluctuates as to whether or not, you can't really depend on sales tax. And if that, if you don't vote on, the constituents don't vote on it every five years, we're gonna have to automatically increase the mileage rate, which automatically increases your taxes. So it didn't matter if you were in or out. If you were in, you still gonna have to take that because the, the constituents didn't vote for flossed. So if you opt out, and I'm not pushing for either, but I just wanna make sure that I put it in as much layman's term as I can, because I will tell you, this had my head spinning for a long time and I've met with them so many times to go over it. It's like, oh my God. You know, one day I'm thinking we should opt it in and one day I'm thinking we should opt out. But I just needed to see all of the respective facts and talk through some scenarios. And I realized if you opt out, nothing changes. So that, you know, we're not asking you, you're not saving that $15 now. But you're not going in getting charged an extra $15 to that commercial property. So I'm hoping, ma'am, that, put it in layman's term, I hope, okay, you don't lay it behind you. Is that, that's, okay?
I'm following better.
Alright, thank you. So hopefully, I, I kinda, it, it, it's, you're gonna pay it regardless. The governing body has to operate. We have to be able to do what we can to make sure we meet the needs of our constituents. And I'm not gonna ask y'all if we meeting all those needs, cause I know some of y'all saying, oh Lord, let me raise my hand, cause you're not doing all that. But we still have to have money to operate. So we're gonna end up having to get it one way or the other. So either we're gonna have to unfortunately look at our mileage and charge you, or we're gonna have to look at the commercial. And if you opt out, you're not doing either one differently. So hopefully that addresses some of the concerns that some of you may have. Um, and gives you as much information as we possibly can. Again, the decision has not been made, but we do wanna hear from you so that the governing body will know the better direction to go in.
Let, let's get our question and we'll let you come after.
Hi, my name is Diane, hey Tamika, Ms. Allen. Um, I am a property owner as of 2014 here in Richmond County. I owned a home in Birmingham, Alabama at one point, which has lower tax rates than what we have here. But at the same time, our tax is gonna go up anyway. I just got the home exemption about a year and a half ago. And we're getting ready to raise the, the trash pickup. We getting ready to raise, um,
That's not determined on trash. We working on that.
I hope y'all stop working on it and leave it alone. Because I don't use that trash like that. I would love to do, dump my own trash, but that's not the case. And, um, the thing is too, because of Hurricane Helene, all these houses, when they get, uh, done, they're gonna come out and reassess these houses anyway. Their barriers gonna go up, the taxes gonna go up.
That's not determined either.
Okay. This might not be determined, but I, and my, one last thing. Now, if I'm gonna pay taxes here, I want somebody to come up on the south side and start doing something.
We've been saying that from day one.
I know, but that's the problem. They saying it.
We said it last week.
They ain't doing it.
I agree.
I mean, and just to give you an example, my ditch, which belongs to the city, that I called before Hurricane Helene to come and clean the ditch. It hasn't been done yet. I done called two, three times.
Yeah, on the sidebar, let's get your address. We'll get it done. Thank you, um, thank you for your comments. Alright, sir.
Okay. Uh, first of all, we all here are getting information from you guys, right? The two number crunchers, the tax guys, for some of us, what you're saying sound like the teacher on Charlie Brown. Wah, 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 right? So, and we can look at the charts and we can listen to you and it's your job. You, you know that better than we do. But it still doesn't make that much sense. You have to, you have to read the charts and listen to you guys and try to figure it out. We appreciate our ruling body being here and stating somewhat your opinion about it. And I think that will influence people more than listening to our tax guys. And I was also asked to ask a question that, since you're here and some of the commissioners and where are the rest, where are the rest of the commissioners?
I, I can easily answer that for the governing body. Considering how busy it is serving in this role, there are so many other things. Um, some of the commissioners were at the last session, some are gonna be at the next one, but just keep in mind, the schedules are busy, people have, um, different things, uh, and they're probably at another event or they're someplace else. Maybe even at a community meeting. Sometimes you have other community meetings, so we can't speak for them, but I assure you that they're working on your behalf.
Well, I was at Diamond Lakes and I saw, uh, I, I don't know Ms. Sliestack there, but, uh, Slindack, sorry. You're new. It's gonna take me some time. But there's some other commissioners that I didn't see at Diamond Lakes. I don't see them here. And who knows that are gonna be at the, uh, municipal building when you go.
I can't speak for that, but I will say that they, they are hopefully out working in the community.
Pass that on to those guys there.
You, you're already doing it. You know what? You speaking to that mic. You see that, that screen over there? You passing on. Talk to them, talk to them.
Okay. We wanna know where are the rest of the commissioners. So show up.
You said it. Alright. Come on up, sir. I see you back there laughing, Commissioner Frandom. Yes, sir.
Uh, so I just wanted to say one comment. Uh, I also voted yes for this. Um, because I've got a full-time job, a part-time job and a 21, uh, 21-month-old daughter and, uh, did not have time to get out the thesaurus and dictionary to, you know, do the calculus on exactly what this was. Um, I, I appreciate y'all's explanations of it. It definitely helped, but it's complicated.
Very.
And, you know, currently, our property taxes are complicated. 90% of the time when somebody appeals their assessment, I hear it on the, uh, on the Board of Equalization and we have to explain to them everything that goes into it. You know, here's where you're assessed. Well, then it's only 40% of that. And then they say, well, you know, the dollar figures went up. The county's just getting all this extra money. And we have to explain, you know, that y'all don't just get a free check, you know? And we have to explain, you know, that y'all don't just get a free check, you know, when property values rise and everything. So my opinion now would be to opt out of it, um, and, you know, possibly form our own committee to look at something that would benefit Augusta as Augusta, not something at the state level that would benefit some people, but not all.
You must've been doing some research, because that's, that's a popular trend among governments. Uh, there are others that, that are doing exactly that, they wanna be able to main control locally, so they're putting their own spin on this opportunity for floating homestead exemption, and I, I think that should be a conversation for this governing body. Should we opt out? How do we continue to protect taxpayers and property owners in Augusta, Richmond County, and we'll make sure that we lead the charge to do that.
And I'll say one last thing, um, you know, the state of Georgia, the standard exemption is two thousand dollars, in Augusta, it's five thousand. So, you know, our county already does more than the state does for us.
Say that again, wait a minute, come on, come on, you gotta say that one, you gotta look in the camera again and say that again.
Uh, so the state of Georgia, their standard exemption is two thousand dollars, and our county, it's five thousand.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Alright, guys, any, any other questions? Alright, come on back, ma'am.
I don't have a question, but I do have a, a comment. I'm getting a better understanding of the floating, uh, homestead exemption. But, uh, I'm kinda hearing from you that, the panel, that you, I hope that you're working, our governing body are working on some pathway to try to bring more businesses and companies and to our area, to the Richmond County area, so to help our, our community grow and our area grow. Is there a plan? Are you guys working on something, uh, other than, you know, the splotch or the splotch nine? What, do you have something on, in the works, or you got a committee, you trying to do something to make our country, our community grow, Richmond County?
I tell you, once I heard those statistics regarding our, uh, personal residential home growth, it, it is concerning, and that's something as a governing body we're gonna work on. I've heard some of the barriers include, um, our ability to permit and inspect homes, it's, uh, uh, an obstacle for developers, and, uh, it's our intent as a governing body to get better at that, we have to get better. Because as I asked Commissioner Fratim, for nine out of ten years, we've rolled your taxes back, tax rate is equal to, tax rate's what, twenty, two oh, twenty oh four? It, you have a commission now that's committed to protect property owners. We take a more conservative position as to the tax dollars that we collect, making sure that we try to do right by them. And we still have work to go, but this governing body will continue to take that position that, uh, whatever your tax dollars that you commit flow into our government, we're, we're gonna spend them with Duke here. Alright, any other questions? You know, um, it, it's, it's seven, seven, ten? Alright, come on.
I'm Christine Bruner, bear with me, I kinda wish I'd had the courage to ask this an hour ago. But, um, I appreciate everything y'all have shared and explained. My concern is with Tina as to the reason and the legality of the process. How is it that we voted on something that's fixing to get undone?
Alright, so the complexities of it is that House Bill Five Eighty-One was introduced at the, in the Georgia General Assembly, passed and endorsed heavily for passage among the residents and citizens of Georgia. However, now that it's passed, no one understood the complexities of it. We didn't, but, you know, to, to, to their credit, they said that each county, each city, and as, as I mentioned, a hundred and fifty-nine counties, five hundred and thirty-seven cities in the state of Georgia, all of them kinda operate differently based on, I guess, their ratio of homeowners versus commercial property owners. And they said, we'll let the governing bodies of those municipalities make the decision that's in their best interest. And that's what we're here trying to do.
So the state legislature did that?
State legislature did it. They put that ballot initiative for you to vote on on November fifth. And everybody in the state overwhelmingly voted for it, but no one really understood how complex it was and how it applies to their particular, uh, specific community.
If I can have one more second?
You can have.
Thank you, while I'm here. Um, what can we do as citizens so that in the future, when we get proposed amendments, that we can make sure that the education goes out ahead of time and that there's not cause for stepping back and changing things after an election?
I could tell you that, you know, now, uh, the Georgia General Assembly is in session, so if you're a policy wonker hat, kinda like Supar or myself, all this information is available in a lot of different ways. A lot of bills that come through the House and the Senate, they're introduced every single day. Engage with your, your state representatives, your delegation, listening in the meetings like this. Make visits to your Capitol. Now, I'm gonna put a plug in, Greater Augusta Day is when, Supar? February twenty-eighth, we get to go to the Capitol to celebrate Augusta. Now, if you aren't doing anything, we'd love to have you. Come up, you hear a lot of great things about, you know, legislation that impacts Augusta as well as around the state. But I'd like to pack out the entire Capitol with folks from Augusta, uh, getting educated on important legislation that it, that, that impacts us.
Thank you.
Okay? Oh, wait a minute, I gotta add one more day. If you, how many retired veterans do we have in here? You're already on the bus? How many veterans know about Veterans Recognition Day on February nineteenth? You can also go to Atlanta and get a lot of good, important information regarding veteran-related issues and Augusta-related issues. Alright, any other questions? I can't thank you, I'm, I'm gonna bring the administrator up to close this out, but, um, this is special that you guys will come out on a cold, dreary Tuesday night to talk about a very complex issue. It really means a lot and it says that you're really interested in your community and how it impacts you. So on behalf of the governing body, even the ones that aren't here, and I'm telling you, they're probably working someplace, thank you guys for being here. Madam Administrator?
I just got, um, just to piggyback off one, that a lady, she lives in South Augusta, and we've been, you know,
Yeah, you need, yeah.
So just to piggyback off, uh, the young lady, the lady that lives out in South Augusta, I too live in South Augusta, and we are striving for businesses to come out there. However, just like she said, she's been trying to reach out about getting her ditch cleaned. I have complained, complained, I've called the Marshal Department, I've called the Police Department, I've called my commissioner.
You didn't call the mayor.
I've reached out to you at your office, cuz I've had your number and you were supposed to call me back.
Hey, hey, don't you be looking like that, I'll see you back there, look at him.
So I have, we have, um, I was telling someone in the back that, uh, one of my neighbors inherited a house and he was trying to get a certain amount of money for it, and he couldn't sell it for that amount of money because we have a person that's on our street, and on the corner of the street looks like, it looks worse than the junkyard. And I have complained, this has been ongoing. I've called code enforcement. I've gotten every, he has a active warrant on him. They will not do anything, and I have to walk out on my front porch every day to see this, but yet my property taxes goes up.
Unfortunately.
And like she says, with the ditch, I've called, I've called, I've called, and I'm a former city employee. And I've called, I've reached out to, I've had to go to a commissioner I know, and he got someone out there. He's, he's not even commissioner in my district. And I got the ditch cleaned that day, but when I went to complain about my neighbor, my other neighbor, he's eighty-five years old, and he paid somebody five thousand dollars to put up a privacy fence because he don't wanna see the junk in his neighbor's yard. I can't do that because if I put a privacy fence in my front yard, I'm fine, because it's on the main street. So this is why, when it comes down to talking about property taxes, talking about floating taxes and things, what is it doing for us that's paying this? Stormwater fee. The, the, the list goes on and on and on, and so, I took this opportunity to say this because I, I don't know if I'm the youngest person in here, but I have two properties in South Augusta. And it's the same, and so when you're talking about people who renting out their houses and they're not, they're making, they're not making the tenants keep up the property, it hurts us.
It does.
So when you say call, you know, call, I've called, how much, next thing I, I do not,
So, so, we're, we're here for House Bill Five Eighty-One, I assure you, in a community forum, we'd love to have a discussion as to, how we can make, not only South Augusta, but other properties that have nuisance neighbors, how we can make them better. Alright, that's fair? Alright, that's fair, alright. Any other questions before we call our administrator up? Come, come on up, ma'am. Alright. Alright, so three one one works, and there's also an app for three one one now. Madam Administrator, what's it called? Is it called GUS? What is it called? Augusta, call GUS IT, three one one, it, it, all those work. So ladies and gentlemen, again, thank you for coming out on this dreary night, I'm gonna turn it over to our administrator, Tamika Allen, to wrap us up, thank you.
I think our tax appraiser has something else to say.
Two more comments, um, so kinda unrelated to what we've been talking about, but I mentioned earlier, check your homestead, um, far too frequently, we are working Alright, um, who are in their eighties and are still paying school tax? And unless they wanted to pay school tax, most of them don't, uh, so check your homestead, if you're sixty-five or older, you can qualify for the school exemption, please do that. And also, if unfortunately you had any damage from the hurricane, and that damage is still on your property, please get in touch with our office by April first and let us know what's going on there. Check your homestead by April first, change it if you have to, so a little homework for y'all, uh, over the next couple of months.
Okay, so I just wanna remind you, just in case you didn't understand everything and you have any additional questions, of course you can call your favorite commissioner anytime you want. However, we will be having another hearing on February eighteenth at eleven AM in the chambers at the municipal building. Again, February eighteenth at eleven AM. If you have any questions about House Bill Five Eighty-One, we would sort through the mud as best we can to explain it again. But we will have another one. Again, the decision as it stands now has to be made before March first. That is the deadline for everybody, March first. And young lady, I hope you didn't call the administrator's office. I, I don't think she did, okay, so she didn't call the administrator's office. Oh, but anyway, we, we, we definitely wanna make sure that we address any concerns that you have. Hopefully this has been, um, very informative for you, and again, we have another one. Please come, join us, ask any questions that you respectively have as it relates to House Bill Five Eighty-One. We wanna thank you again for coming and sharing some of that time and some of your concerns with us tonight, thank you.